Get started on the next item, which is a consideration item, and we will receive the Salinas strategic plan update from the city manager.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council members.
You are here.
Reeva Thelman, our facilitator that's been working with us, she's going to walk you through it and have the presentation. Thanks.
Good evening, council, mayor and council. I'm honored to be here with you in your beautiful council chambers today. So since we met, I guess it was about six, eight weeks ago, what I have done is taken all of the input and feedback that you gave us during our working session and put it together, did some wordsmithing, and really tried to go through all the things that we talked about that you wanted to highlight in your upcoming strategic plan. I think it's really a good reminder for us to remember that what the strategic plan does is set forth a path for the council and the city as they develop next year's budget and the work plan, and being able to tie all of those tasks to these big overarching goals that the council has. And so as I worked through our strategic plan, I made sure that we were focused on your priorities, that you emphasized on having transparency and how your government works, operating with ethics and values, and really focusing on developing strong partnerships and relationships with all the different entities, both private and public, that you work with that help make Salinas such a great place to live and work. So with that, I'm going to move forward, and as you remember, we had talked about having different buckets of topics, and so those still remain the same. I haven't changed any of those, but as you go through them, if you see something I may have missed or added in that you don't want to see, just holler, and so we'll move through. So our first bucket, as we called it, was economic development, and I know this was really important to all of you, as it is to your staff. And so here, all the different things that we had talked about was completing an agricultural technology plan and engaging with all the stakeholders in the community to come up with ways to do innovative workforce training. Everybody good on that one? And I guess, Mayor, do you want me to go through all of them, and then you'll, I'll pause before I go to the next slide?
You do your thing, and then the council will...
Holler if you need me to stop. How about that? The second one is support and engage both new and established businesses to drive economic growth and job creation. Really worked on wordsmithing that one. We had looked at it a few different ways, and I feel like that really hits what you had all wanted to see in there. We talked about revitalizing residential and commercial areas that are currently blighted, and that's through targeted initiatives, private investment, and community partnerships. Again, you see the need to have that emphasis on partnerships there. The fourth one is strategically explore and expand economic development opportunities throughout the city. I heard you all loud and clear about the emphasis on economic development, so I hope that grabs that for you. And then the last one is maximizing the use of the airport property so that we can get some economic growth through there. So I'll pause, and if anybody has changes to those? Nope, keep going.
Do your thing.
Okay. You're going to make this easy for me. So under housing, that's our next topic, we're going to continue to pursue transit-oriented housing development opportunities, so that's housing around transit corridors. Promote the health and safety of our unsheltered residents by developing supportive services and housing, and working again with all of our regional partners on that. We want to facilitate the addition of workforce, low-income and farmworker housing, as well as ADU developments, while doing that, while minimizing impacts to your residential neighborhoods. I think we spent a lot of time talking about the need to have that balance, and so hopefully this goal captures that desire. And then the last one under housing is to streamline the entitlement and permitting of residential developments by implementing efficient workflows and ensuring timely reviews and approvals. Again, we talked about the need to have an efficient government process to streamline what it is for your customers to come into your city hall, to get permits, to get information. And so I felt that the wording here really helped us capture the desire of this council to really have a government that lives in 2025 and is efficient and moves things through in a streamlined manner. And infrastructure, I think you're all very hard on yourselves, I have to say. I spent a lot of time driving around the city today, and things look really, really good to me from an outside perspective, so kudos to you, whatever you're doing, it certainly looks good and is very welcoming. But the first one here is improve the condition of the city's streets and sidewalks through proactive and creative maintenance and strategic infrastructure investments. This, again, was something that you all really emphasized about how important it was to have projects that do really move forward these goals. The second one here is to explore innovative ways using technology to improve the flow of traffic throughout the city. There's lots of great technology out there, and so really commend you for looking forward in trying to come up with ways to make sure that you're as modern as possible in your city with the technology that's available. We want to continue to invest in recreational and public facilities that support our community, and then evaluate the capacity of the city's infrastructure and their systems in anticipation of future development. And certainly, that's another important forward-thinking goal, which is to make sure that whatever is underground is also meeting the needs as you build a more robust city and develop, that you need to make sure your sewer systems and your other flood control and all of that are capable of handling that. Under our city services, we talked about completing the Vision Salinas 2040 general plan, so 2040 is like tomorrow. We've got to get going. Promote equitable access to city services and foster inclusive development, again, going back to making sure that our city hall and our city services are welcoming and meeting the needs in a streamlined manner for our residents and business communities. Ensure fiscal responsibility and financial management, that's always very important. Providing high-quality customer service, expanding our volunteer programs, and engaging residents in improving communication to the community. So that's finding out what our community needs, and then giving them information in a regular and timely manner, in a variety of ways that they can receive that information, whether it's through a website or different types of communications. Public safety, certainly extremely important. We all had talked about making sure that the community is prepared in case there's a disaster, so it's encouraging emergency preparedness and resiliency throughout your community. In terms of our police and fire departments, it's enhancing recruitment initiatives to increase staffing and focusing those recruitments on our local talent here in Salinas and in the neighboring areas, so drawing on people who are ready in our community. Continuing community policing efforts that would build trust and foster collaboration between the community and law enforcement. Expanding code enforcement efforts and capacity to address citywide issues, and that can be a variety of things from blight to nuisance, parking, health, safety, really anything that is not legal is how we address it with code enforcement, and of course, unpermitted vending. And then the last one under public safety is increasing collaboration with partner agencies to address public safety, public health issues. So a lot to do there, but I think with the staffing and the police and fire departments that you currently have, you'll be able to effectively meet these goals. And then in youth and seniors, the four that we came, I was able to whittle us down to are improve, expand, and develop both youths and senior facilities and programs, looking at joint use agreements with the school districts so that the community can use recreational space on those school-owned properties when school's not in session, and that's a wonderful thing that a lot of cities do to maximize existing recreational spaces for the community. Increasing community events throughout the city for both youth and seniors, and then partnering with regional stakeholders to improve access to the arts. So those were the things that we came up with, and I am happy to go back through them, make edits, go home for the night, you tell me what you need.
Well, what we're going to do is we're going to let the council, you know, since this is a little different and flowed out of a strategic planning session, we're going to run the gauntlet with the council, and they'll do a combination of questions and comments.
Sure.
And then that's how, and then we'll go out to, go out to the public. Andrew, you ready with some thoughts and questions?
Sure. I know we talked about this at our strategic planning session, but how does the development of an agricultural technology plan look like? Is that something that's going to come, like, presented to the council, or is that, how's that going to work?
Well, the mayor council, yeah, whatever, if this is something that states here, we would work with key stakeholders, and we would bring something, we would bring something back to you, whatever, whether it's, you know, I don't see us doing, actually, the plan I see us facilitating from a comfort, from engagement, from a connector zoning and all that. So I think part of it is getting the key stakeholders and having a conversation with them, and then bringing it to the council, and sort of a workshop. We're not, this is not our lane, per se, but we do, from a zoning engagement connector, we do have a role here. So that's, if the council thinks this is important, that's what we, how we would approach it.
Yeah, just for accountability, if it might not be necessarily a plan, maybe there should be a different name, you know, just a thought, because, you know, we look at this a few years down the road, and they're going to say, well, where's your agricultural technology plan? That might be something, I'll hear what my colleagues have to say on that.
But I think I just add, as we're working through these, they can, and sometimes will evolve and shift to something different, and we'll bring that to you as we're starting to look into it, and maybe we missed the mark, and maybe we have to go a different direction. So this is a guide, but it doesn't mean that, you know, we're actually going to get to do everything if we have to evolve it.
Sounds good. And number four in housing, streamline the entitlement and permitting process. I know our top three are, you know, focused on, you know, low-income housing, workforce development. Do you see a need to include, you know, market rate housing and not just specifically calling out the other ones, or is that implied? Because, you know, not everyone is looking for, I mean, everyone wants affordable housing, right, but not everyone's going to qualify for those particular affordable housing units.
I think that would make some sense. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so is that something we should include in there, or? Well, that would be my recommendation that we include, that it's not just specifically the affordable units and ADU and worker housing. And then we talked about, I think some of the things that, you know, assuming we adopt this, this strategic plan, I think it'll speak a little bit towards items that we have in the future. I'm just looking at some of the partnerships with the school districts and expanding facility use agreements, which, do you, do you see that? What process do you see that taking? Do you see that benefiting from having, you know, like, an education subcommittee where we're partnering with school districts, or how do you foresee that happening?
So there's several models, right? If this is something that is part of the plan, we would work with the superintendents and so forth to discuss it. They would bring, they could do their respective policy boards, I would bring it here, and then we can work towards that and get some direction, then put the plan together. So that's one model. Another model is to a subcommittee, you would have board members of the school district and the council have that conversation, then the rest have to do it, and then we will bring it back. So I think part of it is, both models work, it's really up to the council how you want us to approach it. I can tell you right now, I'm having conversations with the superintendent to deal with some of this, as how we address issues of traffic calming or other issues that happen on a school site by site, because we typically will get a principal or a school administrator either reach out to staff or reach out to a council member, hey, we want to deal with this. And I think there should be a much more efficient way of doing that. We work in collaboration with another agency, another former government, this school. So I think there's two different models. You can direct this, and we will work with our counterparts to then bring it to our respective policy bodies, or you can form a subcommittee with council members and school board members, but we have five school districts here. So when you think about that, it becomes, it starts becoming a little large. That's all.
Right. And I guess this is just for, maybe wordsmithing or where would it go, but in the past, I think we've been intentional about spending money on prevention, and I know it could, I guess technically, go under youth and seniors, but in our last strategic plan, did we have something specific revolving investment in prevention services as well?
Sure.
No?
Yeah, we could certainly add.
I think, I think, you know, we have some funding around that, I think we should be intentional about making sure our plan includes prevention, funding for prevention services. And after we adopt this plan, what is, what is our check-in going to look like? Are we going to align, you know, is this plan going to result in our staff meeting and saying, how are we going to get to these goals, or are we going to try to just put things that we are working on and align them to these goals? How do you foresee that?
So both. So we are currently working on efforts that are reflecting in some of these goals, if this is what you're aligning, so we'll bring that forward. If there is a direction here that we're not working on, we would come back to you with, you know, the work plan and so forth. We're hoping to develop dashboards, so that's why I think we spent a lot, we've spent a lot of time trying to sort of condense these so they're manageable, and then we can develop some dashboards. And the goal list that by the end of the year we'll have, you'll be able to see what we're doing, I just have it in front of me, on housing, continue to pursue transit-oriented housing development opportunities, we would report what we've done, and then we will report to you in the annual budget process what we've done, which I think that's sort of the, a little bit of the missing piece, to hold ourselves, for you to hold us accountable, for the community to hold us accountable to this.
And I know that Kristin, I know she's here, I think, does a good job of identifying what our, what the agenda item reflects a strategic plan item, and as we bring forward new items, because the way I see this, this is like a big vision for the city of Salinas. And so, you know, this is, this is going to be our guiding document. So as items come forward, as they do from councils to make this change or make that change, are we going to reflect back on this strategic plan to say, you know what, this direction, or this doesn't necessarily align with your strategic plan goals?
Yes. The short answer to your question is yes, we will, and the others, you'll start seeing in this year's budget document, which we'll have a budget workshop the 27th of this month, you're going to start seeing a little bit of us sort of realigning how we're presenting the information. And so I think this is a work in progress, but we want to anchor this, we want to anchor our budget, our staff reports, what we present to you, to this.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think this, I mean, it's a great plan, you know, I think our residents are going to find out, I mean, ask how we're going to plan to implement it, and what benchmarks we're going to set to hold ourselves accountable. And when would we, when would we do our next check-in on how the strategic planning is going, or the implementation is going?
I think, well, I think mid-six months into it, I think would be a good check-in, and then we'll just, if we develop the appropriate dashboard, the goal is that you will be able to, hopefully, people will walk in and will be scrolling our progress, so people can see that, and maybe we'll end up with, every six months, we'll just have a check-in report here, here's what we've done, here's what shifted, here's where we missed the mark, because sometimes we won't be able to get something accomplished that we thought we were, so just report to you how that's moving forward.
Okay. And I know in the past, we talked about, like, a public-facing dashboard, you know, and I think that'd be a great, where someone can go and say, hey, where's this project along the way? So I didn't see that specifically. What category would you see that in our plan about community, not just engagement, but information? I saw something along the lines, but...
I think under city services?
Yeah, I would say under city services, either under two or six would be kind of where that's captured, but we can certainly change the wording if you feel like it's necessary.
Yeah, I just, I just think that this council, for many, many years, even prior to me being on here, has talked about a communication plan and, you know, how we get the word out, so I'm not sure what wordsmithing would be needed to kind of encompass what I'm telling you, I'm sure you can figure something.
Sure, and I think, you know, the city manager and I talked about that, and I think those are things that will be captured in the work plan, the specific tasks that staff will be able to do. And one of the things, I just wanted to give you a little feedback on your overall question of how this document works. Think of it as a living, breathing document. It sets a path for us today, but certainly the city manager is nimble to be able to bring it back to you if something needs to shift or change, if something changes.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my comments.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Andrew. Tony?
Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I have some comments. I really enjoyed the Saturday that we met, was it a Saturday that we met?
It was a Saturday.
Good strategies. You know, one of the things that government just sometimes, we focus on, either we don't have enough staff, money, whatever, but I think this roadmap gives us a good guide on what is it that we can accomplish. I know as I meet with the city manager and the assistant manager twice a month, we can, this is going to be my roadmap, at least for a year, to discuss how are we doing in certain areas that we can make something happen. But what I am convinced, I believe the city manager has 11 departments in this city. Am I correct on that? Around 11? If all 11 departments do not get as a team, we can do this every year, and it's not going to do anything. We have to work together. If a police officer sees something at the park, or you know what, or the parks person calls the police, we need to engage, because I have learned that if every department is on a different page, I don't care how many plans we have, we're not going to get anywhere. So if something is going on in our neighborhood, and somebody sees it, whether it's a public works truck, a code enforcement, a police officer, a council member, a mayor, whoever it is, if we report back, somebody needs to answer that call, and let's get on it. Otherwise, there's going to be a lot of frustration, and what I do appreciate about this plan, there are things that I already see that we can accomplish quickly, and then there's long-term things that we need to do. But I think, to me, I know here with my colleagues, I know, just to give you a quick example, because we don't have, we don't have Cluster Park right now, so people are going to Natividad Creek Park, so I'm sharing with my colleague here, hey, the porta-potties or whatever, because people are going from District 2 to Natividad Creek, because we don't have a park. So we need to work together. And then we need to take the minimal amount of people to Montevia so that we can enjoy our friendships over there, or whatever it is. And I think what's, what's critical to me is communication, and if we don't communicate, whether we agree on our politics or not, that's besides the point. It's about serving the public and making our city better. So I appreciate this, this will be with me for quite some time, and every time I meet with the city manager, we'll discuss it.
I'm sure he'll be happy to have copies for you in his office.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Jose?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Really enjoyed getting to engage with you at our strategic planning session in February, and also seeing your presentation at the Liga Cities last week as well.
Oh, thank you for coming.
So I have two particular comments, one on housing. On item number three, Councilmember Sandoval expressed kind of a need to expand that a little bit more. Just a suggestion would be, maybe we focus more just on general supply-side housing or pro-housing policies, instead of specifically calling each one out individually, just supply-side housing policies. Another suggestion under city services, again, along Councilmember Sandoval's line of questioning for item number six on communication, particularly an emphasis on communicating what the city does and what we're doing, with the heavy emphasis on Measure G, which we're really trying to, you know, get passed in the future, and it's going to be very critical, so I think it's key that we start communicating to, messaging to the community now, what exactly we're using Measure G for, and, you know, different things that are going on with those funds. But aside from that, really looking forward to seeing this being implemented. I see you've incorporated many different aspects in generalizing it in a way that empowers our city administrative team to actually execute and, you know, pivot as needed, but thank you overall.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Jose. Brilla?
Thank you very much for hosting the strategic planning session, I think it was back February 22nd, and as I look into the audience, I know that we have some bar readers and some new faces. I really liked the process that you went through and those people were, you know, we did have that opportunity to look at the previous strategic plan and do some fine-tuning there, so I want to thank you.
And just want to thank you for that, for that opportunity. Having done my fair share of strategic plans in the nonprofit sector, trying to think of an analogy I might be able to give to our audiences tonight, you know, clearly, we're not the city of Los Angeles, and I'm going to use Los Angeles as an example tonight. So as some of you may know, like, the World Cup and the Olympics are coming to the city of Los Angeles. So I'm pretty sure as they're going through their strategic plan, right, they may have this other emphasis around, like, how transportation is going to look like, how traffic's going to look like building up to, like, these very large events where, you know, tens of thousands of people will be coming in. And as you know, that probably has an impact on their public safety, that would have an impact on their local economics, and what I mean by that is, you know, the hotels and the restaurants that will be benefiting, right? So having that strategic plan really gives them that guiding document of where they want to be in two years, and that council will be working towards that. I feel very fortunate with our strategic plan is that, you know, we are addressing, you know, what a typical city needs to address, right? So again, it's economic development, it's housing, it's our infrastructure, city services, public safety, youth and seniors. And so for me, having this document and being able to look at some of those bullet points will really assist me, you know, in providing that feedback to my fellow council members and our city manager in terms of their direction that we want to go into. I think if I had a particular one that I could pick, it'd probably be housing, because I think we continue to hear that in the city of Salinas, housing is a need, and so having that included in this strategic plan will also be that reminder to me as I meet and confer with my fellow council members and city manager, you know, our overall strategical. But again, just want to thank you for taking us back and taking us through that process of looking at our previous strategic plan and fine-tuning and editing the document that we have here today. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Brilla. Gloria?
I have comments. Well, looking at our strategic plan that we put together that day, and we had community members that also gave input, I think they're all valid points, and some of them we're already starting to see that's happening right now. But I want to go back to joint use with our schools. Currently, we have a swimming pool, I believe, in Alvarez High School that is not used, and, you know, we have a lot of families that come and say, we need more recreation. Well, there's a swimming pool that is not being utilized by a school district, gee, maybe we can work together to make that happen. So that's one. And then the other one is, we have a lot of soccer players in our city, so how can we joint forces with our school districts to provide, some of them are already providing, you know, their fields for soccer players, I see that, but can we do an assessment of which schools are not, so that our community members, we can do some joint uses here? People want to play soccer, and I think that we should be working with the school district, that they open up their fields. So that's another one that also...
And I think the city manager, it sounds like he has a roadmap of how to move those conversations forward and bring them to you to formalize.
Okay, so that's good. But housing, well, yeah, we know we have housing, so it's in our plan, and we need, we need to address all the issues that are in this strategic plan and make them work, put them to work, you know what I mean? And going back to customer service, I guess that would be a question to our city manager. I'm sure that with this, we are ongoing having trainings, education to our employees. Are we continuing that?
Yeah, you saw... Yeah, you saw in the, in the finance committee, the overall budget presentation. That'll be coming to the council for deliberation. Right now, the budget reflects about $100,000 for increased training. Our HR department, Marina, is coordinating that and so is our assistant city manager, Lisa. So we are really emphasizing more training in the future. Customer service, you know, just connecting with the public and other, how to be innovative and how to work together. So there's a lot of stuff. We'll present the plan once it's fully developed.
Okay. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Yeah, good way to keep this in mind is this is what you want to achieve and then your city manager figures out the how and how to pay for it.
Margaret?
That was going to be my comment. I think this is a great first step. And the fact that we got this done in four hours and you were able to capture it is very impressive because I know there were a lot of thoughts coming from all of us. And those of us who are, you know, new to the team, you know, we, we still have a lot of, you know, flushing out to do and thinking to do. So I think this is a great start. I do see it as short-term or long-term, and I think within each of these six focus areas that we'll have to have, I would assume, a prioritization within those. That'll be part of the strategies and Renee will be guiding staff to get that done. So I'm really happy to see the outcome of this. I just wanted to ask on the, the housing on item number four, we talked about permitting residential development. So I'm assuming that's really getting our permit center to be more effective, more efficient, running smoother, because that's certainly one of my top priorities. Out in the community, we hear so many complaints about, you know, it's not fast enough or we're getting denied or we don't get response. So to me, that would be a top priority in that category. And then I had a question in the infrastructure. So you mentioned explore innovative ways to use technology to improve traffic flow. As we know, traffic flow in the city is really poor. You know, we have too many cars on the road and we don't have the infrastructure to be able to support all those. So do you have thoughts on what that might look like? Or who's going to be bringing back to us what some of those solutions might be?
I'm happy to play engineer for 30 seconds and hand it over to the city manager. But, you know, there's a lot of things with technology now where you can have a camera system that watches the flow of traffic and then talks back to a main system to change lights accordingly if traffic's starting to back up. So that would be just one very quick example, but I'll defer to the city manager.
Yeah, it's a lot of that. I know Tamsi's exploring, exploring use of AI on 68. So part of that is, you know, looking at our network streets. Right now, we actually have the ability, it's a lot, it's human, but we, our major streets, we are seeing the flow of lights and we're trying to, you know, rush our traffic. We're trying to kind of speed up the traffic because if one stalls, then everything stalls. So AI seems to, they respond a lot quicker. So we're looking, we'll look at some of that kind of technology. And also how to interact better with real-time data throughout the day because, you know, things change, patterns change. And sometimes I can't keep up fast enough throughout with the changing conditions. So it's a lot of that. So we will probably, we are looking at updating our, our security plan when it comes to IT because we're, we're looking to bring some people from the outside, helpless experts. And I think that's, I mean, there's a lot of experts in this space that we can certainly bring and just do an assessment of where we're at.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of, in City Services, the general plan, the Vision Salinas, it says complete. What percentage do you think is complete to date and how much more do we have to go? And I know we're going to be spending a lot of time on the general plan, kind of, you know, revamping it and updating it. But what does that look like?
So I think right now, we're almost to the point where we're going to be releasing a public draft. And there is a joint meeting with the council and the planning commission that we're going to be holding in a few weeks to kind of give you a first look at the general plan from a sort of comprehensive. So we're looking at somewhere, at least not here, around 2026. So certainly within the two-year window, we will have the general plan completed and open for final deliberations and vote.
Okay, so good, near future stuff. And then lastly-
2040. No, I'm kidding.
That feels like a long way to wait for me, but anyway, City Services, I love that. That's probably one of my most important ones is the high-quality customer service. I think that's an area where we can get a really quick win by just doing a few things differently. And what I'd like to see is, you know, increasing our timeliness in response to the public. And I think that's where people get frustrated and that's something I think we can, that's a short-term win, so. But I think it's very comprehensive. I don't think there's anything missing at this point. But I like that it's a living, breathing document. We can continue to mold it as we go forward. So thanks for all your work.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Margaret. All right. We will go out to the public. Any, any comments from the public? Two minutes on this item.
So I'm very, very happy to see code enforcement included. And so what you don't enforce, you permit and you encourage. And in the neighborhood that we've lived in for the last five decades, we have seen the quality of life deteriorate because there is no code enforcement. And so when there is no code enforcement, at least in our neighborhood, although we suspect there is code enforcement in other neighborhoods because we have an advocacy-based system, if you have a lack of code enforcement, the quality of life deteriorates and it goes down. It's a rush to the bottom. And so I've gone through many strategic plans in my former career in public education. And many of these, they sound good and have lots of great wording and lots of great goals, but they're never implemented. And so, City Manager Mendez, I would like to see a code enforcement officer assigned to each district. So I would like one assigned to District 5. And I would like that code enforcement officer to go around and learn the neighborhood and see where the low-hanging fruit is and to issue citations. And so when you see a car parked across a sidewalk, thereby obstructing the flow of someone, a walker, let's say, you cite that person. And if you see other kinds of citations, you know, issue them. And so that's something that you can actually do. Right now, there's supposedly 13 different code enforcement officers, but I hear there's only five. But if you talk to the HR department and say, where are the openings? There are no openings. And so I would like to see some new code enforcement officers assigned to each district.
Thank you, Peter.
Hi, good evening. Jose Guerra, Motilla Community. I love all these great presentations you guys give. They look really good on paper and you can present them up here, but what percentage of them are you completing? Because I went to two meetings this last week. One was the one for Chinatown remodeling, the other one was for District 1 and 2. I was told District 1, but it's, it's the east side, so it's everything in Aliso. I was misinformed on that, by the way, too. And I don't see anything being done. I just see a lot, a lot of meetings, a lot of wasted time, a lot of publication. A lot of people getting paid to just make reports and nothing being done. And I'm seeing that nobody up here gets along with anybody. It feels like nobody's collaborated or getting along or talking to each other up here. I mean, I agree with the gentleman. We need code enforcement for every district and a peace officer, someone we can talk to that can help us improve our neighborhood. I know most of you guys probably don't live in Salinas. I mean, you do. God bless you if you do. If you don't, you should try to visit, you know, Salinas and walk down the street and see what your neighbors really need. And I think our representatives need to just walk the block and not talk the talk, walk the block. I think that's what we really need. So these, these meetings are great. Thank you. I mean, the presentations are awesome. The young lady is really good at what she does. But what have they really done for the community? What have you really done? And building all these ADUs, you're not helping. You're just, you're just flooding the city and the community with more and more cars. Build more housing. What about our farm workers? Have we forgotten about them? They make you guys all the good money out here you guys make, all the ag that makes millions of dollars, trillions of dollars out here. You forgot about the small person that helps you the most. Take care of them. Come on, guys. God bless you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Luis Chagojuez for Building Healthy Communities. And like everybody else, really appreciative of the presentation. Speaking as someone with a background in the arts, in the public arts, we know that there have been some barriers that have prevented our local artists from really, you know, being activated and, you know, being contracted to do, you know, projects here. The, we know that the underpasses, the big underpasses, Sanborn, Alisau and Market, there were, there were these great undertakings that took place. And it was a collaboration between Caltrans, Monterey Peninsula Arts Council or Monterey County Arts Council and the city of Salinas. And as, as big as these projects were and, and the hard work that the city of Salinas put, you know, invested into that process, you know, it was, it was unfortunate that there were no Salinas artists that were, that were employed, that were contracted to do, to do those projects. Of course, if you speak to some of the folks that were facilitating that process, you know, they're, they'll give, they'll give the reason, you know, the barriers, the reasons why our local artists didn't participate. But those were like big contracts, you know, $300,000 plus dollars each for each of those bridges, right? The Market Street Bridge went to artists from Santa Rosa. The Alisau Bridge went to artists from Monterey Peninsula. And the Sanborn Bridge went to an artist from Los Angeles. Imagine if those went to artists that we know are qualified to do that work here and bringing that and keeping that dollar here locally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. Concerning the housing side, I heard some comment about specialty housing, ADUs, workforce, low income. Then I heard some comments about focus on the supply side. Also important, I think, to keep in mind the demand side. And in reviewing this document, I saw that there was some emphasis of support for the unhoused services. I would like to put a comma and support for tenants too as well in that area there. Secondly, yes, there is housing, on April 22nd, I believe, housing spoke to us about there are no short-term rentals in Salinas, which bring, which can bring the same kind of problems like ADUs do. And that's just not true. I have, in District 3 where I live, there's a house behind me that I share a backyard with that has Airbnb all the time, pretty much 24/7. Sometimes it gets loud. So I think that needs to be addressed. It may be taking away from some rental inventory. It's causing nuisance on occasion. They do, they do close up shop by 10, which is good. And, and I don't know who would monitor that. I don't think it's the police. I think it would probably be code enforcement that checks into how many Airbnbs are active in Salinas at any given time. But it is really happening. I think others could back that up with me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council Mayor. My name is Maria Chavez. And I'm here again to ask you, there has to be something we can do about the prostitution. Yes, it has included, it has improved, but it's still bad. In District 4, it's still there. We have to do something. We don't want them there anymore. On Sunday, there was another accident. And thank God, nobody died. But what's going to happen when somebody dies? Who's going to be at fault? I'm already trying to get signatures. And at night, it gets worse because it's dark. We're always worried. We're always praying that nothing else happens. They're starting to let the ladies down, they let them out of the car and into our parking spaces. So there has to be something we have to be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council Mayor Donahue, my name is Ignacio Fregoso. I'd like to start, oh, sorry, if I may, I'd like to amplify some of the most relevant topics we've had lately in our community. I'd like to start by reading a quote from economic historian and social philosopher Thomas Sowell. The quote comes from his book titled Basic Economics in the States. "While there are controversies in economics as they are in science, this doesn't mean that the basic principles of economics are just a matter of opinion any more than the basic principles of chemistry or physics are just a matter of opinion." End quote. You see, I find it very ironic that the same individuals with these romanticized progressive ideologies, they argue for market controls, are the same individuals that increase property taxes and use that to finance public projects that's generating public debt. Public debt that will be paid by current and future generations to come. These individuals don't want you to own anything. That's how they keep control of the mass population. They'll use politics driven by emotion rather than logic to achieve their political goals. We ought to focus on our established revenue streams of income and enhance them to work more efficiently. Some basic examples include eliminating bureaucracy and building permits. On the residential level, we need less regulation as well. People trying to build sheds or covered porches or remodeling the garages do it illegally without permits because the city wants them to, the city wants to squeeze them out on as much money as possible. That's an immense revenue stream the city is losing. Moreover, we need to maintain and reinforce oversight committees that overlook the finances that come out of the sports complex. That's money that's generated on public grounds and the city's entitled to what it's owed. Lastly, I want to say I believe a true leader must maintain the public's interests ahead of self-interest. However, a true leader must also maintain logic and individualism and use that to win the public's trust. I would rather fight and self-sacrifice for honesty rather than become a puppet of a system. And I also want to say that we need to stop, you know, spending, spending money, spending money, spending something. Everything sounds good, but we need to have a strategic plan. I appreciate this plan that we have in place. I was trying to get push forward, which has got to make sure that it's being used with revenue streams. You guys are here as business owners. You guys would never run a business the way we use government sometimes.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, City Council. Speaking of personnel, we have a little issue here with Montebella. We started on this project last year. We met this year.
Does this pertain to the strategic plan? The comments, the comments on, public comment will come in a few minutes. This is about the strategic plan. Is this about the strategic plan?
No, this is about Montebella.
Okay, which, which I can't wait to hear the next, next update, but that, that has to come in public comment. This is, this is about strategic plan. Great. Okay, all right. All right, any other public comment on the strategic plan? All right, with that, I'm going to close comment on that and bring it back. If there is a comment from Zoom, yes, thank you for catching that. Chris?
Adam, two minutes.
I won't need that much time. Just keep it very brief. I want to thank and appreciate the mayor and council members for recognizing the importance of streamlining our permit center. As we've had, as we've discussed in previous conversations, at the heart of our housing problem is a supply problem. And ultimately, the fix is to build our way out of it. So thank you for recognizing that need and I look forward to working on improving that.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Okay. With that, public comment is now closed on this item. Looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Actually, I have a question. Okay. There is a motion. Okay.
Yeah, just, I just want to go back to the housing. How do we make the determination? Because I know Councilmember Badaj has kind of indicated that we should focus on housing overall. I don't want to eliminate the, the specific call-out to affordable housing. So how do we make that determination if that gets included or not?
See part of the motion, right?
Councilmember, at this point, it would need to be a part of the motion if you wanted to make that change. Because as I understand it, the motion on the floor is to approve- Because as I understand it, the motion on the floor is to approve the strategic plan as presented. So if you want to make wordsmithing changes, it needs to be incorporated into the motion.
Sure. Then I'd like to make a substitute motion that we receive the report with the inclusion of the affordable, number three, affordable housing, and then include the overall production of housing.
Okay, is there a second for the, okay, all right. And with that, we can proceed with the substitute motion?
We can, Mayor. I just have one question. I want to make sure that both Riva and the manager have that language specific, so there's no question about incorporating it. Riva, do you need some clarification?
I'd just like to read it back for the record, if that would be okay. So number three on housing would be facilitate the addition of the overall production of, and then all the listing there on out? Or did you want to add market rate into there? Because you had mentioned that previously.
Overall is fine, as long as the low workforce, low income, and farmworker housing is included in there, an ADU.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Tony, you're comfortable with that? Okay, all right, then we'll go, we will go ahead and call for the question. Patty?
Calling for the vote on the substitute motion, Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember DeRigo?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. And thank you for catching that. Andrew, we appreciate it. All right, with